Good afternoon, I want to welcome you to the October 23, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. I want to apologize for being just a couple minutes late. We are renovating City Hall and we're going floor by floor, so whatever floor we are on moves up to nine. And right now, we today started on the executive offices on three. So I forget, it doesn't just take me 30 seconds to walk down the stairs from three, it takes me about five or six minutes because the elevator stops at every floor coming down from nine, as it turns out. We have, you know what, this is pretty cool. Today's invocation is being offered by City Clerk Americas Grace Tuning, and I think that Grace holds the record for longest-serving employee ever of the city of Orlando at 49 years.
Wow.
And she looks like she could do another 49 right now to me, but she was also the longest-serving city clerk at 26 years, and I'm pretty sure that's a record that will never be broken as well. Since her retirement, she remains active in many local organizations and is currently midway through her master's degree in liberal studies at Rollins. In 2008 Greenwood Cemetery dedicated Tuning Way as one of the winding roads through the cemetery, and it is, I go by there every time I go through Greenwood, and I was out there not too long ago to see the Pulse sites, and you drive right by Tuning Way. And her husband was also the police chief here, I don't know how many years, maybe you can tell us when you come up, but she'll be giving us the invocation and then Commissioner Sheehan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You may stand or remain seated.
Now, I was going to say, this is kind of like deja vu, being in here again. A few months ago during the new city flag committee process, which I want to tell you was a great experience, and particularly working with the dynamic Michelle Brennan and her outstanding staff. Anyway, Beth Davidson from the City Clerk's office recruited me to give an invocation and gave me the list of the available dates. So I chose October, which is my lucky month. And why lucky? Because in October 1953, I was hired in the City Clerk's office as cemetery clerk, which was the lowest position in the city. 1974, October, Mayor Langford appointed me as deputy city clerk. Two years later, he appointed me as city clerk. And in October 2000, I announced my retirement effective in 2002, because I had so much accumulated vacation time and sick leave, I had to run it out. And then, as the mayor said, in October of '08, Tuning Way was dedicated, which honored Bob and me for 80 years plus of combined service to the city of Orlando. And today happens to be my late hubby's birthday, so that made it even more special. So with that preamble, let us pray. Government is not a human invention, but designed and established by God for our good, per Romans 13:1. How truly blessed we are to live in a nation with the privilege of choosing our leaders when millions of people in the world don't have that right. In 1 Timothy 2:1-2, the good book says, "To pray for those in authority, so that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." Now, God hasn't promised that every government or every political leader will become pure and righteous if we pray for them, but He still commands us to pray for those who have been entrusted with public office for their wisdom and their integrity. So may God go before you to lead you, behind you to encourage you, above you to protect you, beneath you to uphold you, beside you to befriend you, and within you to inspire you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Grace. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Eves.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
May I have a quorum with all members present?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First order of business will be consideration of minutes from the workshop of general view and city council meetings of October the 9th.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Hill, on favor of motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, on to wards and presentations, and the first, Billy Haddaway, our Transportation Department Director, is going to introduce Mobility Week.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. You've probably seen around the building some flyers like this, advertising the upcoming Central Florida Mobility Week. The city of Orlando is proud to join with our local partners in celebrating the second annual Central Florida Mobility Week, October 28 through November 3rd. Here today from FDOT to accept the proclamation, our Libertad Acosta Anderson imporna bata teria.
Hold up, ladies.
Thank you, Billy. Thank you, good afternoon, Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Libertad Acosta Anderson, like Billy mentioned. Thank you so much for having me here, for being such good partners. Mobility Week is a cooperative effort of the DOT, oh, sorry, I didn't realize that was it. It's a cooperative effort of the DOT and partner agencies to promote multi-modal transportation. It was inaugurated last year and is modeled after the European Mobility Week. Please visit our website, there is information on Mobility Week there, and the events that we held last year, the events that we're holding this year. It also has information on the Mix It Up Challenge, which is a competition, an online competition where individuals can register their biking, riding, biking, walking, transit, riding, and carpooling trips to earn points and badges and prizes. The website also has our contact information. If you had any questions or you would like to have additional information, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We'd love to help in any way we can. And use the hashtag that is shown here to promote Mobility Week with that. Thank you so much for having us.
Well, thank you. Just so happens, I have a proclamation related to Mobility Week. Whereas Mobility Week is a cooperative effort by the FDOT and its partner agencies, including the city of Orlando, to promote awareness and safe and sustainable transportation choices by hosting public events, and whereas Mobility Week is the in ideal time for county, cities, and transportation agencies to highlight transportation achievements, roll out new initiatives and/or implement new policies, and whereas Mobility Week is consistent with our key priorities of keeping our city moving and making Orlando one of the most sustainable cities in America, and whereas the city of Orlando supports Mobility Week by participating in transportation events such as Bike to Work Day on Friday, November 3rd. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim the week of October 28 through November 3rd, 2017, as Mobility Week in the city of Orlando. Ortiz, Ortiz, go back, go back. Okay, and our other presentation relates to Stroke Awareness Day, and I'm going to ask Marcia to introduce that one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city commissioners. Thank you, Mayor. Today is a special day in the city of Orlando for many reasons, but one of them is that we are able to acknowledge Stroke Awareness Day in the city of Orlando. And here to share with us what that means and why it impacts so many families, not only in our community but across the country, is the, basically the president of the Scott Cooper Smith Stroke Awareness Foundation, and that is Deanna Cooper Smith Marquez, and she's going to give you a brief overview. Deanna?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and chamber members. My name is Deanna Cooper Smith Marquez, and I am the president of the Scott Cooper Smith Stroke Awareness Foundation, which was founded after my late husband Scott, when he passed away suddenly from a massive stroke in 2009 at the very young age of 32. I'd like to start by thanking Mayor Dyer for once again recognizing the importance of raising stroke awareness in our community. There are nearly 7 million stroke survivors in the United States, and it is the fifth leading cause of death in the U.S., and yet it's often unspoken of. Florida Hospital South alone takes in approximately 1,200 stroke patients per year. These are our neighbors and they need our help. Knowing the signs and symptoms of stroke can save lives and greatly improve the recovery process of survivors. Stroke is also thought, often thought, to be something that only affects the very elderly. According to the National Stroke Association, there was a 44% spike in the number of the young Americans under 45 years of age hospitalized due to stroke over the last decade. Yet 73% of younger Americans are not familiar with stroke symptoms and the need for urgent medical attention. This is why our mission to raise awareness and funds to help survivors and their families is so important. October 29th is World Stroke Day, and as the president of a foundation that raises awareness and funds to assist local stroke survivors, I am extremely thankful to Mr. Mayor Dyer and everyone in the great city of Orlando for supporting what we do. Please visit www.strokeawarenessfoundation.org to learn more about Scott, our goals, and to learn how you can assist local survivors and become involved. Thank you.
Whereas stroke is the second-leading cause of death worldwide and the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States, and is a leading debilitating health problem, and whereas the Scott Cooper Smith Stroke Awareness Foundation is dedicated to connecting with those affected by stroke and healthcare professionals through community outreach by raising funds to further the awareness of stroke in young individuals, encouraging the rehabilitation of survivors, and providing emotional and financial assistance to survivors and caregivers, and whereas the Scott Cooper Smith Stroke Awareness Foundation and its founder, Deanna Cooper Smith Marquez, are empowering stroke survivors worldwide and serve as a leader for World Stroke Day, which was established by the World Stroke Organization in 2006 to increase public awareness of the high stroke risk and stroke prevalence worldwide, and whereas stroke can happen to anyone, including children and babies and uro, but age, heredity, race, and gender can increase risk factors, and whereas the World Stroke Day is an important opportunity to empower residents in our community and worldwide to learn how to prevent or recover from stroke. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the city of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Sunday, October 29th, 2017, as World Stroke Day in the city of Orlando. So just this last week, our District 4 Commissioner Sheehan was recognized by Harbor House as the Harbor House of Central Florida's, with the Harbor House of Central Florida's Champion of Equality. Congratulations, Commissioner, and thank you for your work in helping us work towards ending domestic violence, and it's so appropriate to have it this month, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Congratulations. Okay, Hurricane Irma and Maria updates. It's been several weeks now, I guess, since Irma made landfall here and Maria made landfall in Puerto Rico. So our main remnant here in Orlando relates to storm debris, and our crews and contractors have picked up a little over what we estimate as 60% of the debris. We have completed our entire first pass of debris collection in every residential area, and we're moving to the second phase, and we'll have a third phase after that. We want to make sure that our residents and city crews and debris contractors work together, so continue to bring your debris to the curb, bag loose debris such as leaves, and put small branches into bundles, and make sure that we are not mixing garbage, construction debris, and vegetative debris, or that will not get picked up. If you need additional information like when they'll be in your neighborhood, you can go to cityoforlando.net/debris. As to our efforts to help Puerto Rican and U.S. Virgin Island families that have been displaced by Hurricane Maria, we are participating in the Disaster Relief Office that is located currently at Orlando International Airport. Our Ola Office is temporarily located over there and is helping to connect evacuees with more than 100 government community organizations to find jobs, housing, healthcare services, and other resources. Our Ola Office has assisted over 2,300 individuals and has been operating from 9 to 7, 7 days a week. You can also get information about that on cityoforlando.net. Mobility Week, we just declared, starting on the 28th, and we're going to be doing a number of things, and also there are a number of items that are on this agenda which will highlight Mobility Week. Funding for the Kirkman Road Multi-Use Trail, approval of a pedestrian bridge at Orange Avenue in Gore as part of the Crescent Lucerne project, a grant for OPD from FDOT to help improve pedestrian and bicycle safety, and a funding agreement between the city and BikeWalk Central Florida for our ongoing Best Foot Forward effort. And I want to remind everybody about Bike to Work, which is Friday, November 3rd, and we'll be riding from Festival Park to City Hall, so I hope anybody that would like to will join us. Okay, here's one that I am really excited about. There's no doubt that arts and culture help to create our community's unique sense of place, and today we will be furthering our identity as a cultural hub by approving the appointment of our city's first poet laureate. In July, we started the search that began for Orlando's official storyteller, who will promote an appreciation of poetry among residents and inspire new generations of literary artists and readers. I want to thank United Arts of Central Florida and Borough Press, who we partnered with to develop the qualifications for the position and then assisted with the search process. Also want to recognize our poet laureate selection committee for all of their efforts in reviewing 49 applications. Would members of United Arts, Borough Press, and the selection committees please stand and let us thank you? I know there's some of you here. Okay, and then our soon-to-be poet laureate, Susan Lilly, is with us today. She's a teacher and a published poet, and she was selected and appointed to our position. She's a University of Central Florida grad, whose love for literature stems from early in her education at our community's public schools. I know that there were probably, the selection committee told me that there were at least six really outstanding selections. I met the last three, and it was so hard to pick because all three were just outstanding, but I think Susan is going to do a great job in representing us. She's here with us today, and I'm going to ask her to recite a poem, but I'm going to wait until we actually vote and make you the official poet laureate. I think it would be better if it is not the poem before you become poet laureate, but the first one you do after poet laureate. So that will be after the consent agenda, but why don't you stand and please accept our appreciation. All right, equally as fun is the renewal agreements for our city's nine Main Street districts, and I see a lot of smiling Main Street district people out there. Main Streets, if you can believe this, will be celebrating our 10th anniversary in 2018. It's hard to believe that, but the amount of benefits, including 6,000 new full and part-time jobs, 975 businesses, I bet we'll get to 1,000 before we actually have that celebration, and more than $1 billion in investment. So we're the only city in America that is a large city that has a large number of Main Street districts. Most of the time, the Main Street districts are through a smaller town, such as where I grew up, Kissimmee, would have a Main Street district. But I think we've made unbelievable use, we've been the model, we've been selected. One of our Main Streets says "The Main Street of the Year" for the entire country, so yes, it's in Commissioner Stewart's district, as he's pointing out. But I'd like to acknowledge, well, let me do this, we're also changing the funding mechanism just a little bit. Usually, the way it's been in the past is after you've been a Main Street for five years, you can receive $25,000, but we're going to bump that to 50, if the city will match up to $50,000 if the district raises that amount of money. So I think that's a great partnership, and I would love to... Okay, that was applause for the new funding mechanism, and now, if all the Main Street managers, board members, and staff will stand, we'll applaud you guys. Okay, and one other item is C11 on today's agenda, is a resolution to support the creation of 30 new high-quality jobs at the Johnson &amp; Johnson Human Performance Institute in Lake Nona. Johnson &amp; Johnson is looking to expand its footprint of leadership development and training center services. They're considering some other states and cities that I won't even mention, because I know we're going to end up being successful with this, and we welcome Johnson &amp; Johnson's additional investment. I want to acknowledge Kevin Buckley, who is here. He's a senior director of state government affairs. Kevin, where are you now? Okay, and with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items that are acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and important happenings in their district, and we rotate the order that we do that, and first up today is Commissioner Patty Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I don't do this very often, people pass away, but this friend of mine was very, very special. Kathy Williams Kearns passed away, and she lived in the Park Lake Highland neighborhood, actually in Commissioner Stewart's district, but I'm going to take a point of privilege because we've been friends for over 30 years. She helped the LGBTQ community gain acceptance in the business community, and it was really hard to argue with this straight, sweet church lady advocate. She was really something. She was on your Senior Advisory Committee, Mayor, I think they had just made her chairperson. After she was diagnosed with MS in her 30s, she never let that stop her. She started making canes known as style sticks, and when I broke my leg last year, she actually made me a special rainbow one. And Kathy was always involved in so many great activities in her neighborhood and in the business areas, and a lot of you knew her from her activism and everything that she did. She'll be very much missed. Rest in heaven, my friend. On the agenda today, very happy to see the Main Street funding. I think that's the best investment that we make, frankly, of anything that we do here in the city of Orlando, so I want to thank all of you for your hard work. I consider many of you friends, and keep up the great work, because you bring so much good, positive energy and attention to our city, and I know a lot of it is because of all the hard work that you do, so thank you very much, Main Streets. And Barbara, I think your milk banners are on here today, so we're just rocking today over around the milk district, too. Something else I wanted to talk about is, something that's been a little bit difficult to deal with lately, is there's been a lot of fussing and complaining about the yard waste, and I just want to thank the Streets and Stormwater folks and the Parks Department who have been assisting the solid waste department. There was four and a half years' worth of mess all over our city, and people will complain about government services, they want everything yesterday, but I have to tell you, I got a quote for my own personal yard waste because a guy came by and gave me a quote, and he said it would cost $100 to remove my yard waste, and yet the people in the city of Orlando pay less than $20 a month, and they get very angry when things aren't done immediately, and they don't want to bundle it, they don't want to bag it, but they want it picked up immediately. And I have to tell you, I'm going to give a shout-out to Alonzo and Mr. King's Crew and all the solid waste people and everybody else, because when disasters happen, dedicated, thank you. When disasters happen, these dedicated public employees, who everybody wants to criticize if anything, the smallest thing go wrong, but they restore the traffic lights, they clean the streets, they run generators at the lift stations, and they go out and direct traffic, and all these things that nobody wants to do, and they get out there and they do it without a complaint. And, you know, I got to tell you, I've been getting lots of emails from people who are frankly ungrateful and angry because they've been inconvenienced. We got people in Puerto Rico who have no power, and they're sewage, they're drowning in sewage, and it could have been a whole lot worse for us. And I think that we need to be grateful that it wasn't a lot worse, and I just want to thank all of you city employees who are out there, still out there sweating in this heat, doing all this work, because I'm almost embarrassed to have to forward you these emails, but I know you're doing, you're working your hearts out in 12-hour days, and I want to say, "Thank you." Thank you. And I'm going to go back to my ungrateful emails from people, and I'll have to forward them to you, but again, I know you work really, really hard, and I wish folks just realized how hard you worked, and what they're getting for their dollar is of very great value. And I want to thank the city council, too, for your support during this very difficult time, you know, with all these storms and everything like that. But again, it could have been a whole lot worse, and I've got folks in my district who lost their homes, and I wish people would kind of put that in perspective. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheehan. We'll move to Commissioner Hill, District 5.
Yes, Mayor, I heard you earlier said that Commissioner Eves has a flight to catch, so I'm going to hold my updates until next week, I mean, the next council session. But the work is on my District 5 Facebook page, my Instagram, and also City of Orlando website for update, you can look there. So I'll yield my time, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Man, take it after Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Eves?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Earlier I said I had no comments.
Oh, no you didn't!
But I want everybody to know that Grace Tuning is in the house, and her husband, Chief Robert J. Tuning, when I was a graduate of Boone High School in 1970, hired me as a police cadet, and I served in that capacity for two and a half years. And in 1973, he hired me as an Orlando police officer, and I served in that position until 2003. So thank you to your husband, who I just love dearly, Robert J. Tuning. Thank you, Grace. That's all, Mr. [inaudible].
You know what, Commissioner, that was okay. Commissioner Gray.
Baby steps. We'll get him there, we'll get him there. Good job. Well, since you two are so brief, I'm going to take five minutes from each of you and go 10. No, things going on in District 1, as you know, are on my website, both past and future. I do want to mention real quick and say thanks to everybody that's here for a funding agreement, whatever that might be. Thank you for what you do for the city, and I do want to shout-out to our friends at Johnson &amp; Johnson. Kevin, thanks for coming. Kevin, thanks for coming. Part of the benefit of job creation, we know what that is, but the great thing about what groups like Johnson &amp; Johnson do is by bringing executives here, if you don't know what they do, they do what we should be doing, but we keep putting off, which is council executives on time management, stress management, work-life balance, all the things that we remind ourselves we should do every day, we just don't have time to do. But they train executives in that. But the key is, not only do they come here to learn that through the different seminars, but those folks are exposed to Orlando and Central Florida, and that's part of how we grow our neighborhood, our community, is exposing people to all the great things that we kind of sometimes take for granted, day in, day out. And so for that, I sure want to throw my hand in. Hope you guys stay with us. We'd love to keep you here in Orlando. So with that, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. We'll move to District 2, Commissioner Ortiz.
Well, Mayor, I'm going to take everybody's extra time. I'm going to take all that time today. Let me start with, actually, let me start with UCF. Nobody has talked about it. We won against the Navy. Ain't nothing something. 31 to 21. Invictus. Oh, boy. And I can talk like that because that's my alma mater. So, very proud of them. Item C-9, congratulations once again to all the main districts and our Market Street district. And along those lines, I would like to congratulate Gateway Orlando District, former President Susan Wilcox, President Todd Piotkowski, Market Street Director Miguel Guitard, Ribbon Riders Sunshine State Medical Hall, in addition to our supportive community for an incredibly successful Bratini Gala, creating awareness and raising funds to find a cure to breast cancer. And Commissioner Gray was there with us, having fun. He's not going to talk about what he saw over there. And Commissioner Pete Clark, also. I want to thank them both for that support. It was a great night. On the same note, we had the opportunity to be part of a great breast cancer awareness event through initiative of True Health. True Health is a star organization who, in partnership with the American Cancer Society of Central Florida, is leading the fight against breast cancer. Ladies and gentlemen, an annual breast cancer test can save your life. And that goes for the guys, too. Well, we don't do the same as the ladies, but check it out, okay? Check it out, because it can save your life. Since Halloween is around the corner, we wanted to talk to kids about safety, and that's why Mr. Carl Anderson, Officer Jose Sanchez, Captain Jose Valles, went to speak with the kids at Dover Shores about Halloween night and trick-or-treat safety for kids night out. Our youth are an important part of our community, and their safety is paramount to all of us. My recent trip to Washington, led by the President of the Florida League of Cities, Mr. Gil Ziffer, we were able to meet with representatives and staff of Senator Marco Rubio and Senator Bill Nelson, a number of Congress members, to discuss the following 2017 federal action agenda: National Flood Insurance Program, Tax Reform, Municipal Financing, Transportation Investment, Generating Economic Recovery. And those would be the CDVG and Tiger Grants. Along those notes, let me tell you that our governor met with the Florida delegation, and he was advocating also for funding for FEMA, especially during his times after the hurricanes. And as my belief, they're working to pass legislation, an $18.7 billion legislation. So those are good news. And $2.5 billion, I believe, for the citrus industry. So those are good news, and our representative at that level, they're working hard to get that done. This Thursday, October 26, from 5:30 to 7:30, Greater Orlando Aviation Authority will be having a workshop for small businesses at our Englewood Neighborhood Center. As you all know, the MCO, Greater Orlando Aviation Authority, our airport, is going through a $2.1 billion expansion on its south terminal. As a result of that, Greater Orlando Aviation Authority is looking for contracts with local businesses and are looking to award anywhere from $300 million to $350 million. So don't miss out on this opportunity, small companies I'm talking about. Our Fall Festival is this Friday, October 27. The event will feature a basketball tournament, custom contest, face painting, and much more. Bring your friends and families and join us at the Englewood Center from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And last but not least, I want to acknowledge Mi Familia Vota, who are here today advocating for a trust act, which I am also supporting. So please stand up, Mi Familia Vota, to be acknowledged. Thank you for being here with us today. You're not a weirdo. Thank you, Mayor. That's all again.
And we'll move to District 3, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
I betcha. That was fast.
I want to mention a couple of things, but thank you for your comments about Kathy Kearns. Commissioner Sheen, she was a good friend of the city, and I appreciate her life, and we'll celebrate it on Thursday, maybe on Saturday. Special thanks to Grace Tuning. She's been one of my cheerleaders since forever, so thank you, Grace, for being here. Special congratulations to Orlando Main Streets. Thank you for what you do. I've got a couple of quick announcements on that, and so I want to mention them, kind of go one by one. So the College Park Main Street Jazz Fest is coming up on the 4th. We had a great event from Audubon Park Garden District Zombie Fest. Thank you very much for that.
That was a zombie, Commissioner.
Hey, don't forget, Commissioner Sheen, we have a plan in case we're attacked by zombies. We proved that a few years back. And then, of course, the Wonderlust and the stuff that's coming up with the Ivanhoe District, and then, of course, Mills 50 has always been, I kind of take part ownership in them. I appreciate the work that they do because I think it just creates a whole, every one of our Main Streets has a unique style to it, and that's what makes it great about it. I want to say special congratulations to Jeff Arms, who's going to serve on the Appearance Review Board. We don't typically talk about that, but I try to talk about it as often as I can because our city runs on volunteers, and we have many of these boards, and Jeff is a former staffman with the City of Orlando. But more importantly, we want people to get involved in all of our boards because it's your city. We want you to be engaged in it. Susan, thank you for your willingness to serve. We appreciate that. And then, also, I want to mention one last thing, and that's the Best Foot Forward. Thank you, Mayor, for mentioning that. We're investing that again this year to make sure that we promote pedestrian safety. What's coming up? And the last, but probably the most important, now that Grace is here, is tonight, the College Park Neighborhood Association is having a historical committee, and the speaker is Kevin Gabriel from Gabriel Subs. How many of you guys are actually head of the Gabriel Sub? Raise your hand. Oh, come on. There's got to be more than that. So he's going to talk about his dad and sharing local history since they were there years ago. I have a chance to be part of that, and I've helped put Kevin through college, so it's really nice to be able to, the amount of subs that I purchased over there. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right. Hold on. Normally, I let everybody leave immediately after that, but you don't want to miss the first poem, Martin New, poet laureate. So I'll give you a chance to do that. Susan, would you come on up? What did we actually call you, Deep Poet, when you are introduced as Laureate Lily?
Laureate Lily. Alliteration.
Alliteration. Okay, here we go.
I'm going to just say thank you so much for making an official space for creative writing and city life. This is really exciting. I'm only one person, but I represent a really burgeoning literary community, and I look forward to sharing the empowering magic of creative writing with lots of people. This is a love poem to Orlando. It's called "Fall for Orlando." As I left the post office the other day, a friendly tourist, family and car pulled over for advice on Asian restaurants within a one-mile radius. We discussed his options as I fanned myself with a winter LL Bean catalog. He said, "You must miss the seasons." "The seasons? We have seasons." "Oh, yes," he smiled, "summer and summer." "Oh, visitor from somewhere cold and gray, do you not see the decorative gourds of autumn around you? Do you not smell the pumpkin spice in coffee, muffins, air freshener? We are passing through the aromatic doorway of fall as we speak, and we check the tropical disturbance reports only once a day. Because as we embrace autumn with all our sweaty hearts, we blow a bitter kiss goodbye to hurricane season, also known as season of the blue tarp and ear-blasting generator, season of who has power hauling tree limbs. We have winter, too, with snowflakes in classroom windows and menorahs and mangers and twinkle lights in the palm trees. And on special days, when the temperature plunges below 65, we have sweaters and boots. We have gorgeous camellias that wait for winter, a million buds among glossy dark leaves dreaming of their own majesty. In early spring, camellias give up their glory to azaleas, their masses of blooms giving grace to the apartment complex, the mansion, the bungalow, the doctor's office, the common roadside. In spring, the oaks finally throw down their acorns. They crunch under our feet on brick streets. Then May fills up with magnolias and crepe myrtles follow, those tall, generous ladies of pink, purple, and white. We have seasons of the soul, too. We feed the hungry in times of feasting. We build, we gather what is needed. We remember the lonely in times of celebration. Under the same sun, we are fearful, we are happy, we are grieving, we are grateful. We have seasons of tears, of loss, of how can it happen here? Seasons when every sentence begins with "if we can get through this," of holding the hands of strangers in a park and pushing forth the light in us, pushing through clouds of pain to the other side. We are flanked by angels. We have pride season with its fierce, hopeful rainbows. We have seasons all right: termite season, mosquito season, football season, tax season, magic season, prom season, rainy season, campaign season, protest season, flying palmetto bug season, and alligator mating season. But back to autumn, which may not look like the scenes in children's books with their apple picking and piles of yellow and red under the maple trees. Our season is more subtle. Every morning brings a new signal of the earth shifting. Drive from here to the coast and see how a forest glints more sage than the sun, and marsh grass ripples in a haze of gold. We know it's fall, not so much by the leaves, but by the light. Thank you.
Steve Hogan and Jason thought we were all sports. He knew. Okay. Now, anybody that was just here for the consent agenda that wants to make their way quietly out, maybe so. All right, Commissioner Ings, you did well.
Thank you, sir.
So if there's no objection, you know what, let's do the CRA real quick.
Right.
Take up the ordinances. Okay. Without objection, I'm going to recess the city council meeting and convene the CRA meeting for the purpose of accepting CRA Advisory Board minutes of August 30. Is there a motion on that?
Second.
Motion and a second by Commissioners Sheen and Hill. Madam Clerk, you can order that however you want. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And then the second is approving CRA minutes from September 6. Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Then, without objection, we'll adjourn the CRA meeting. We will reconvene the city council meeting, and if there's no objection, we will take out of order, Madam Clerk, ordinance, let's see, hearings, first, no, not hearings, just the first, first read ordinance number six. You would read that.
Yeah. Ordinance 2017-62, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to a street name change renaming the easterly part of Caravan Court, generally located east of the intersection of Major Boulevard and South Kirkman Road to Grand National Drive, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to peruse. Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this matter, discussion among commissioners? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Ooh, I was waiting for that scary amendment that was going to rename it Ings Way.
Don't give me no ideas.
Oh.
All right. Let's go back to new business hearings. We have a resolution of the Orlando City Council designating certain real property within the City of Orlando. My, can, Madam Clerk, could you read the rest of that? It's not a title, but it's right at the bottom of the page and the top of the page for me.
Resolution of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located east of Orange Avenue and south of Annie Street comprised of approximately .35 acres as an Orlando Economic Enhancement District as a brownfoot area pursuant to the State of Florida Brownfield's Redevelopment Act, directing city staff to notify the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection of said designation, providing for severability and an effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. Okay, this is a hearing, so do we have any cards with people that would like to participate in the hearing?
I don't have any.
Then we will close the public hearing, discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right. That brings us to hearings, ordinances, first reading, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance...
Number one.
Ordinance 2017-56, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida relating to the Virginia Drive Special Plan Creating Section 62.410 Orlando City Code to establish the Virginia Drive Special Plan zoning overlay district, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Commissioners, this particular ordinance would change the list of permitted land uses in some of our zoning districts and is being initiated by the city. State law requires that we hold two advertised public hearings, with one of those hearings being held after 5:00 unless by a supermajority vote, we decide to hold the next hearing at our normal meeting time of 2:00. Staff recommends that we hold our next hearing at our regular meeting time. Do we have a motion to that extent? So move. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ings. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye. So the motion carries to hear that at our next meeting at 2:00. Okay. Hearings, ordinances, first read, number two, Madam Clerk.
I have a note on this one.
Let's see. Let's go ahead and read it, open it, and then we'll take a motion to postpone it.
Okay. Ordinance 2017-49, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located north of Dowden Road, east of Randall Park Boulevard, and west of State Road 417, comprised of 18.37 acres of land, more or less, from community activity center to the office low intensity, changing the property zoning designation from the community activity center district to the low-intensity office residential district, providing for amendment of the city's official land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
The applicant has asked for a deferral of this matter, so is there a motion to, and this, we had to go ahead and read it because it had been advertised for this meeting, but is there a motion to continue this?
So move, sir.
Second.
To the November 13 meeting. All right. Motion by Commissioner Gray to continue this item to November 13, second by Commissioner Ortiz. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Hearings, ordinances, second reading, number one.
Ordinance 2017-51, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating... designating certain land generally located west of Narkusi Road, north of Tavistock Lakes Boulevard, and south of Tyson Road, and comprised of 14.63 acres of land, more or less, as the planned development district, providing a development plan and special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2017-57, an ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the planned development zoning district regulations for the Lake Nona Plan Development, generally located north of the Orange Osceola County line, south of Downton Road, east of Boggy Creek Road, and west of Narkusi Road, and comprised of 6,969 acres, more or less, amending the planned development district's development standards, site plans, and conditions of development, directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2017-38, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the noise ordinance, amending the noise ordinance to clarify definitions, the method of measuring noise, and the legal description of certain unlawful acts relating to noise, providing grammatical and stylistic updates, providing clarifications relating to the permitting and use of outdoor mechanical loudspeakers and amplifiers, providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, ordinances, first reading, number one.
Ordinance 2017-58, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending and restating the land development regulations of the Calvary Assembly of God Plan Development Zoning District relating to certain land generally located south of Oglesby Avenue, north of East Par Street, west of Clay Street, and east of Interstate Four, and comprised of approximately 39 acres of land, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps, severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2017-59, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located north of Page Avenue, east of Mayor Street, and west of South Brown Avenue, and comprised of .294 acres of land, more or less, and amending the city's boundary description, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as residential low intensity on the city's official future land use maps, designating the property as the 1-2 family residential district with the traditional city overlay district R-2A/T on the city's official zoning maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, permit disclaimer, and effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Aings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three.
Ordinance 2017-60, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating figures CI-14 to be entitled City of Orlando 2017 to 2022 Capital Improvement Element Capital Improvements Fund Schedule, amending policy 2.2.30, the capital improvements element, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four.
Ordinance 2017-61, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the Education Village Plan Development Zoning Ordinance relating to approximately 220.2 acres of land generally located west of Narkusi Road, south of State Road 417, north of Tyson Road, providing amended development and land use plans, providing for severability, permit disclaimer, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And number five.
Ordinance 2017-63, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to a street name change, renaming Philadelphia Avenue generally located between Virginia Avenue and South Lake Formosa Drive, and a portion of South Lake Formosa Drive generally located between Alden Road and Philadelphia Avenue to Alden Road, directing amendments to the official maps of the City of Orlando, Florida, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Hill. Is there anyone from the public that would testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Good luck, Commissioner Aings. We got to that before you had to leave.
I know. I'm feeling great.
Okay. So that concludes the official-agendated business of the Orlando City Council.